Yes, sir. So this meeting, virtual meeting information is as follows pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, chapter 30A, section 18, and the governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Hubbardson Board of Selectmen will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information, the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and or parties with the right and or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town website, www.hubbardsonma.us. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure the public can adequately access to proceedings in real time via Zoom, which they're doing now, and we did advertise this on the town website with the agenda. In the event that we're unable to do so, despite best efforts, we will post on the town's website a comprehensive record of these proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. We put those on the town website, the homepage. On the left, you'll see meeting videos. All meeting videos are being posted there during this virtual era and any meetings that are posted normally.
Okay, thank you. So we'll start off as an open session. Is anyone on the, I see a couple of attendees. I didn't click to see who is there. Is anyone here for open session made themselves known to you?
I'm not seeing anybody. I'm going to type in the chat. If anybody wants to talk, they can type in the chat box or virtually raise their hand.
Okay, well, we can always come back to that. So
Again, I'm sorry, we do have Maria Torigney, a newest member of the Finance Committee. Not sure if you'd like me to promote her to talk.
Oh, it's, it's, it's up to her.
Hi, Maria.
Love to hear from her.
Hello. I'll just watch.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
We're gonna quiz you throughout the course of the meeting, just so you know.
No.
Thanks for being a part.
She just wanted to virtually raise her hand.
Good.
It's exciting.
Yeah. All right. So on to announcements. So we've got the, the first one. Why don't you usually take us through these? Why don't you give us a rundown?
Sure. So last meeting, the board voted to extend the Country Hen Scholarship Deadline to the, just want to make sure I gotta write the 15th. So these are now due Friday, May 15th. Looking to get as many scholarships as we can. A lot of bright, young students who are in college and heading to college. So we're looking to get those applications in and extended the deadline to, to get as many as possible. Bobby, do we have, we have three. Do we have any more since then? You're on mute.
At least one, maybe two.
Okay, great. So
Okay. All right, that's me. So thanks. So the, I talked about this a little bit last time, but since our last meeting, which was last Monday, because apparently we meet every Monday, I reached out to the, to Jeff, who I had already reached out to, but to Jeff, to two members of the school committee, who are Bill Hanson and Mark Widdler, as well as Sheila Taylor of the Country Hen, everyone. So I went through the, you know, sort of the format of how things are going to be, as far as Bobby giving the information to us once it's in after the deadline, and then all the requirements for review and selection after that. And everybody agreed to be part of this committee. So we have a committee of five, and we'll sort of report back when things get a little closer in there. But should be a good group and hoping to see many applications.
Okay, and folks can send those applications to Bobby at BOS@hubbardsonma.us. The second announcement we have is per the vote of the board last week, we will be advertising the affordable housing lot. It's parcel 217, or so-called Lot 2 on Ragged Hill Road, for affordable housing applications. So that RFP will go up on the town website, on my page, under procurement, and we'll advertise it in the Gardner News Central Register and push it out on all of our platforms to invite people to bid on providing affordable housing options for, for that lot here in Hubbardson. That's Wednesday. That'll close in July, July 6th. So May 6th to July 6th. And then we'll be talking about hopefully some options for affordable housing.
Okay. As far as presentations, doesn't look like we have any tonight?
None tonight.
Okay, yay. And then we're onto new business, item 4A, a COVID-19 update. What sort of new information do you have for us?
Okay, just gonna, I'm sorry, I got sidetracked. Okay, so any new information that we have will be posted here. See the red banner on the top of the Hubbardson homepage. Any of the latest information, we update this about every 24 hours, or if any news quote unquote breaks for us. The most current information from the state or Governor Baker's office, the nonessential business closure and restriction on public gatherings has continued to May 18th. Again, the schools are closed and nonessential daycares are closed through the end of June. And the so-called mask order was given last week. So in instances where folks cannot socially distance, the governor has stated that people are required to wear masks. So that primarily in Hubbardson applies to any close quarter trails or any type of public gathering space, public space where, where two people can't stay six feet apart, or inside of our businesses. People should be doing their part to protect others by wearing masks.
You, I couldn't really find it, but I didn't look that hard. But I don't even really want to know. But what is the jurisdiction for enforcement, you know?
I do. So it's, it's very gray. It's up to the municipality. Take off the homepage so you can.
The municipality, the local, the public, public health board, and your local police.
So Jeff has it correct. So the Board of Health has jurisdiction, a wide range of powers in town to, to shut down and enforce many different options to include curfews, which they have not done, nor have they suggested or talked about. The enforcement arm would be, would be the police. So we did have some folks reach out today about people not wearing masks, et cetera. So what we're doing, our initial stance has been just to remind people about social distancing and to talk to people about the benefits of social distancing and remind people that if they cannot follow the rules of social distancing, that they need to, they need to try and wear their masks. So we are taking a community approach to reminding folks about the rules. And honestly, we've had a pretty strong compliance overall.
That's great. And I knew that. I guess I worded the question wrong. I meant like, is there gonna be a fine?
According to the governor, up to $300, I believe.
Yeah.
Can be up to $300.
So we do not anticipate fining residents of Hubbardson for not following the rules. You would have to, you'd have to be blatantly flouting the law and intentionally doing that for us to even consider that type of enforcement. So it doesn't mean we're not taking it seriously, and it doesn't mean it's not extremely important. But we are doing what we always do with community policing, which is reminding our residents of the law, best practice, and going from there.
And then the town reopening discussion?
Yeah. So, you know, we're getting, we are getting as much information from the state as I think they can provide. Obviously, every area of the state is different. So we're not Boston, right? We're not Worcester. We're also, also not Western Mass. We, we have our, our area and how this virus is affecting our area, and then how it's gonna look once everything opens up. So one thing I do want to stress, and I'm just gonna walk through the board, the current thinking, myself, the staff, and what we're putting together for real, for quote unquote reopening the town of Hubbardson. So it's important for, for folks to, to realize that when we say reopening, and this is from everything I've gotten from the federals, all the way down to the state and to my, to my peer towns, it's not gonna be a reopening in like blasting an air horn, and now everybody's allowed to just go back to the way life was. It's gonna be a slow, gradual process. When I say slow, that's really undefined, but it's probably slower than people think. So it'll be a tiered approach to opening to test whether or not certain openings will increase the numbers, decrease the numbers, and ultimately, we're hoping that none of the numbers go up, and we can continue to open and open and open. So I think it's important to start there, because some people here open, and they believe that the world will just snap back to the way it was. And there are some folks in the, in the community that don't want anything to open up and want to stay completely locked down. So the world is probably gonna look somewhere in the middle. I'm getting comments and emails on both sides of this. So I just wanted to put some information out. So I'm gonna share. And this is definitely open for, for feedback, but I'm trying to communicate the current thinking. So, so right now, we're in, I'm putting this in three phases, so it's just a little bit easier to understand. So the opening of town offices and town land to the public here in Hubbardson, a phased approach. So in phase zero, which is what I believe we're in now, we would be maintaining our current stance. So that means there'd be no act, public access to town buildings and facilities. And of course, people can still walk on the rec field and use our great open space as long as they're using their masks and social distancing. This would mean rework, remote work options for staff and only allowing staff in the building when it's necessary, and enhance public safety. So that will continue through June 1st, 2020, or until the governor lifts the stay-at-home order. So if on May 19th, the governor says, everybody go back to life the way it is, you know, we're gonna be strongly compelled to do that. I don't feel like we're gonna get that. I feel like we're gonna get this put on us as a municipality, which is why you're seeing this plan. So phase one, and I'm projecting this for June 1st, 2020, would be the first possible date where we would talk about reopening. So we're hoping at this point, some of the local businesses are allowed to, that aren't open now, are allowed to open in some capacity. I don't see a world where restaurants are now fully able to take in dine-in, dine-in residents or patrons. I don't see a world where some of the stuff around us is gonna fully open like it was at one point, but I do think there'll be a phased tiered approach to, to businesses opening, and we'll encourage that. You could see like a hair salon allowing one person in at a time with PPE being used, and folks being able to patronize the business that way. Okay, so that's kind of the, the topics that are happening at the state level and around us. So in terms of our town facilities, we would be looking to allow public access, but by appointment only, and only if folks need to come to town hall. So we do have the ability to process a lot of stuff virtually, and we're gonna try and continue that. This, this isn't because we don't want folks in town hall, and we're not trying to have a closed stance, but we will be, again, testing like the rest of the world, what access looks like for us, and we need to protect our employees. It's specifically important for a town like Hubbardson, because if we lose one employee, that means we lose an entire department. And that function is now either seriously degraded or unavailable. So we'll have a rotating staff to maintain social distances. So this will probably look like two days in the office and two days remote, again, working with residents on an appointment basis. And then we've already started to institute some enhanced social distancing measures. So we've ordered some glass barriers. Best comparison is the sneeze guards you see at, at some businesses now, or, you know, if you go to salad bars, when we used to be able to do that. We're putting these up in the town clerk's office, the building department, and we'll be doing that for the tax collection as well. And the library, it looks like they're gonna order one. So when someone comes in, they'll stand behind this barrier, and likely both people will have masks on, and that'll be mandatory. So employees can take their masks off when they're by themselves in the office, but if there's any residents who are interfacing with them, mask use would be mandatory to include when employees are together in a small space, masks will be required. Any residents coming in will be required to wear, to wear masks and to sanitize their hands. And then we're looking into an electrostatic sprayer. So this is kind of the latest and greatest in virology, or how to defeat the virus. So we're not sure if this is the way we're gonna go, but they have backpack sprayers now. We've done this already in the office, but we did it commercially. Looks like we could, for less money, purchase our own and have our town custodian using this product. So looking more into this, it looks like it would be somewhere around 1,000 to 2,000 to do this for a year. So definitely worth looking at.
You can find one? You looked at, I mean, I just, I was asked probably a month ago, because we do work that's somewhat related to it. People are already looking for them then. I'm just amazed that they're available.
I think we could get one by July.
Oh.
Like June 1st to July, somewhere in there.
Okay.
But, but they are, you are correct, they're very backlogged. But they're starting to mass produce them. So I think they're coming. And honestly, think the world will have these everywhere once, once we reopen. So then, one issue that all businesses are facing to include our town offices is employees with childcare conflicts. So because the governor has, has closed nonessential daycares until the end of June, we're going to provide some special disposition and help our employees manage both work and life as we move towards a, towards a more return to normal. And then again, enhance public safety. Then, if everything goes this way, right, we're gonna be changing this plan as we go along, and it's not a rigid plan, it's a fluid plan. But it could look like in phase two of this, July 1st, we're seeing better numbers. We're hoping the world is moving in the right direction. Again, it'd be public access by, by appointment or need only, maybe one day remote with the staff. So people are in the office and more available. Some continued enhanced social distancing measures. Our health department today, Mallory did some research, and she believes that most people feel mask use is gonna be about a 12-month thing. So we're preparing for that. We're hoping it's less, but we're trying to understand what the world's gonna look like for 12 months. So that's kind of the phased approach. I'd love to get any comments, if any, from the board on how we're looking to open up Hubbardson. And again, it's a fluid thing, so input is necessary as we communicate this to the public.
Are you able to get masks? And I guess when I say that, I know that, you know, we all, we all know that there, the, the public safety has been provided masks. Are you guys getting some of those too, or acquiring them alternatively?
So we're gonna have to do a lot of staff training, but Mallory's done an awesome job understanding how these things work. So cloth masks are, are perfectly fine for the application we're using them for. But we do have the N95 masks. We will be providing employees with the Tupperware and disinfecting so that the mask can be used for multiple days, just like they do in hospitals. So we're stockpiling enough for, when I say stockpiling, it's not hoarding. We're, we're getting enough for our employees to have for two months, for the bulk of what I think will be mask use and interaction with the public, so that we're ready. Now, if that gets pushed to the left, if we don't do that till August, obviously, we're ready longer. And mass production is ramping up. So by the time, you know, July, August comes around, I do think they'll be more readily available.
Okay. All right. Well, thanks for the update. So moving on to the public budget meeting, we've got that for seven o'clock. So we'll carry on with other items, as you had previously said.
Sure.
So 4C, which is to consider and possibly vote on the host community agreements for adult use marijuana establishments. So we've got some more changes. You know, I know you let us know what those were. It doesn't seem all that major. It's more annoying, I think, than anything at this point, because it's, just feels, just doesn't feel, it just feels weird to be going through these name changes and all that stuff at this point in it. But you want to give us a, you know, cliff notes?
Sure. So we were dealing with, if you remember, meeting from the community engagement meeting or outreach meeting, Damon. Damon has been the negotiator for all of these HCAs with our town council and myself. And then the other owner was Bowie, who was also at the community engagement outreach, the gentleman behind Damon. So basically, what happened was the outdoor grow is now fully being negotiated and controlled by Damon, and then the others are being controlled by Bowie. But we hired a lawyer to make sure all of these are buttoned up, and some suggestions that came back was, was these naming changes. So council's comfortable that it's just a name change unless the board wants to dig further into the, the, to the businesses. It's, the owners have, have remained the same the way that I just divvied them up. So Royalston Farms is now Royal Sun, so that would change the outdoor cultivator only. And then
Damon.
Yes, that's Damon. And then Bowie is, it used to be Paper Crane Inc., but now it's Lovewell. And that changes the retail agreement that was also signed. So we'd have to rescind that and sign the retail agreement again. One of the considerations that, that council jumped all over was, we have a Lovewell Pond Association. So they suggested that the board might not like having one of our local associations in our marijuana business with the same signage. So the signage, the language could include sign, that signage has to say Paper Crane Cannabis, not Lovewell, just to avoid any of that public mess.
Okay.
Those are the changes as, as they were described to me.
Okay, so we can talk about it, obviously. Everyone with their own opinion. I'm, you know, it's fine, as far as I'm concerned. So, so what do we need to do, unless anyone has any other issues they want to flush out?
Okay, so it would be, and I'll put the agenda up, but each one needs to be voted on so that we can, the council really very strongly, because the names changed, that we need to vote again on each HCA as listed on the agenda for you to approve or not approve so that we can sign them.
And I would just say, as a, as a point of clarity, Jeff, your connection's really bad again. So I think someone who's got a little bit of better connection probably be better if they made the motions.
Okay. So I'll make the motion for, to approve a Royal Sun Farm LLC proposed outdoor cultivation facility at 69 Gardner Road.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, Jamie seconds. Any discussion? Okay, I'm in favor. No, roll call. Dan, yes. Jeff?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Chris?
Yeah.
unanimous, okay?
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the Paper Crane Provision LLC proposed outdoor cultivation facility at 69 Gardner Road.
I'll second the motion.
And discussion? Okay, vote. Dan, yes. Jeff?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Chris?
Yeah.
Pat?
Yes.
Okay, unanimous?
I'll make a motion to approve Paper Crane Provision LLC proposed indoor cultivation facility at 69 Gardner Road.
I'll second the motion.
Discussion? None? We'll vote. Dan, yes. Jeff?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Chris?
Yeah.
Pat?
Yes.
Okay, unanimous?
I'll make the motion to approve Paper Crane Provisions LLC proposed indoor cultivation establishment at 56 Gardner Road.
I'll second the motion.
Is there a discussion? Seeing none? Vote. Dan, yes. Jeff?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
unanimous, okay?
And I'll also make a motion to approve the Crane Provision LLC proposed product manufacturing establishment at 56 Gardner Road.
I'll second the motion.
Discussion? None? Vote. Dan, yes. Jeff?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Chris? Chris, okay. Pat?
Yes.
Okay, unanimous? And one more?
And I'll make the motion to approve the Lovewell Provisions LLC DDA Paper Crane Cannabis Proposed Retail Establishment at 56 Gardner Road.
I'll second the motion.
Is there a discussion?
Yes, Dan, I just, as Ryan stated, I think it's a good idea that they maybe stay, when they put signage up, not to use the Lovewell name.
Agreed. Any further discussion? Seeing none? We'll vote. Dan, yes. Jeff?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Chris?
Yeah.
Pat?
Yeah.
Okay, unanimous. All right. Sounds good. All right. Well, we can move on here.
Jamie, just to, just for, because I get a lot of questions on this. What the board just approved was the host community agreements, not the actual facilities. The reason why there's six, it's only two locations. It's each type of adult marijuana activity that could happen at that establishment, whether it be outdoor, indoor, manufacturing, or retail. And the reason why this was of no fault of our town council or board, the, the reason why it keeps coming back is just these details that, that we believe are important in order to protect the town. So it's, it seems minor to vote again and again, but it's important for the process.
Thank you. Okay, we can wrap up a couple more things while we're, while we're doing this. Let's go next to, so there's no old business, unless anybody has any they want to bring up? Nope, we'll skip the town administrator report for a second, and we'll go to policies to review. So something we've been talking about a little bit is the surplus disposal policy. We've had some time to, to look at this. And, you know, if, if, if we're at the point, somebody could make a motion to, to accept this, this or not, this, this policy.
I'll make the motion to approve the disposal of surplus policy as presented.
Second motion.
Okay, is there any discussion? Seeing none? Vote. Dan, yes. Jeff?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Chris?
Yeah.
Pat?
Yeah.
Okay, unanimous. Moving on, we got item eight, appointments, resignations. I see none. And item nine, which is wage authorizations, once again, I see none. Item 10, now we've got minutes to approve. This is April 27th. We were all there. So unless it's, we can talk about it during discussion, if somebody wants to make a motion on that.
What was the date, Dan?
April 27.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of April 27, 2020.
Second motion.
Okay, any discussion? Nope. So vote. Dan, yes. Jeff?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Chris?
Yeah.
Pat?
Yeah.
Okay, unanimous. Item 11 is committee updates. I don't have any, for town center committee or anything else that we haven't already talked about recently. And we'll just jump real quick to 12. This, we can go to this again, but might as well, we've got another minute or so here. Matters not reasonably anticipated by the chair. I don't have any. Does anyone have any sort of quick ones that we, they want to bring up before the budget discussion?
No.
No.
No. Okay. So we've got two more items left. That would be the, the budget discussion, and then the town administrator report. I think we're just about there. Is I filibuster here?
It's not a hearing, so you could start 30 seconds early.
All right. Sounds good. Let's, let's get going on, on item four, the budget discussion.
Okay, I'm gonna call up first FY '20 and talk a little bit about FY '20. Sorry, I have a lot of documents open. Okay. So FY '20. So the reason why we're possibly concerned about FY '20 is we have some increased costs that are related to COVID-19. The board just asked me to look into some of those, and I have an update for you on that. And also revenues. So if revenues don't come in where we projected them, so we are conservative with our projections. So we expect that the revenue numbers would come in a little bit higher than we thought, but because we're not doing a lot of permitting right now, there's not a lot of economic activity in town, and because some folks are having difficulty paying taxes, et cetera, we do expect a drop in revenue. So if that drop gets too sharp, what will, what will need to happen is any money's not expended on the expense side, we'll need to cover those costs, or one-time revenues such as free cash or stabilization would need to be used to stabilize the FY '20 budget. So you've seen this already, so I'm gonna move through very, fairly quickly. One good piece of news is here on the Monitech, I'm sorry, not Monitech, Dispatch. The assessment, we will be getting a $12,000 refund from Dispatch. I'm sorry, not Monty Tech Dispatch, the assessment, we will be getting a twelve thousand dollar refund from Dispatch, this uh the director, Director Moriarty. Received a a grant for his salary, something they like to give to directors who incorporate into the town, like we did last year. With Warren, so that's a change, we're expecting two thousand, it's gonna be more like twelve to fourteen. So overall, with these turnbacks, you'll see some of them, the town council bills, uh Monty Tech assessment. The DPW snow and ice from the winter, and uh health insurance, we did not add an employee this year, so that's one buffer that stayed. Would look to be about a hundred thousand dollars under budget, which is, which is where we try to be um in any year, depending on expenses. We had a lot of expenses this year, so we try to be a hundred to a hundred and fifty if we can. Um if you add in the FinCom reserve that's left, we have about a hundred and four thousand.
Through June thirtieth?
Through, projected through June thirtieth, yes, still a couple months ago. So the, and that's a conservative number on the left, meaning I I think that we'll have a little bit more turnback, but. Try to be conservative on that side.
And the overage is, just so we're clear, this is also gonna be through June thirtieth?
Yes, on the expense side, so um anything in yellow and monitoring closely. Anything in red, we know is gonna go over, so in this one, I'm sorry, it should be red, so the. The ones in white, I'm I'm really not that concerned about, or they can be um covered by internal transfer, except for that one at the bottom called school water tank. So Slade Building, thi- this is mostly coming now, we had stabilized this budget, there was a few repairs done using the FinCom reserve. The only reason it would go over now is because of the extra money we're using to sanitize the building and prep it for COVID nineteen. The good part about that is, at some point, we should be reimbursed three quarters of any of those overages, and we're tracking them closely. Down to police personnel, so we were in what we were calling an an enhanced um. Twelve-hour shift, a really strong shift to cover the initial stay-at-home order, especially when that order was first given. So we did see an an uptick uptick in activity, as the police chief um had had predicted to me. But in analyzing the budget, taking input from the the board and the finance committee, uh there was an understanding that 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 level of. Of shifts couldn't couldn't occur through the year, cuz the expenses would be about a hundred thousand in overage, or or more than a small town like us can handle. So um as of this week, there will be additional support given to shifts that are of high risk. So that means um there'll be some shifts that that are covered more than they normally are, normally we have uh. Quite a few single-man shifts in town, we're not gonna say what shifts those are, I can talk to any member individually about that, that's for public safety. We just don't wanna give away the patrols, but um we do believe that the forced overtime with police, with the money that's left over. And then we we have to at some point discuss um union vacations that people haven't been taking in those buybacks, that the total cost for. For our enhanced public safety during this time will be thirty five thousand through the end of the year. So, not, not a great number, but not the uh the big number that we were anticipating, um and one that we can handle with internal transfers.
So how do you think, so this is obviously a two-month projection essentially, from where we sit today.
So that includes April.
Okay, th- does that even take into account what happens, not even taken account, does it even matter? What happens with the upcoming um expiration or extension of the stay-at-home order?
So if if there's no extension, or the extension which most people think will happen goes to June first, then. Um again, we would look at tearing down the the extra coverage that's to back to more closer to normal, if that makes sense. So we could tear it down again and cut into this number, this is a conservative number again.
Okay.
So this takes into account that we would be at a stay-at-home order through the rest of June, uh we have the ability to peel some of this back, but a lot of this cost too is. We just don't have the ability to allow our employees to take time off. Now, we could carry vacation time, extra vacation time into twenty-one, but that's punting the problem. To next year, so we could take a large chunk out of this number if we had to, and give people extra vacation time next year, but that costs money and overtime to cover. So it it just creates a twenty-one problem.
Which we have a pretty big one anyway, so um yeah, understood, okay, carry on.
Deal with it, we should, so we, the police cruises are pretty solid, um knocking on wood again, so this vehicle maintenance budget is is good right now. We don't expect any um additional costs, if they did come up, then that would cause an overage, hard to predict. Uh fire engine three, so the fire department is able to cover the four thousand dollar costs with internal transfers. We're still waiting for the diagnosis in the bill, so that could be a very small cost, um five hundred thousand dollars. And worst case, we're replacing the entire water pump, and we we predict that'll be thirty thousand dollars, so this could be. Anywhere from two to thirty thousand, which isn't a great range, I wish I had more detail, I just, we just don't know at this point, so very conservative number there. And then um Dennis has been working overtime, and he's gonna be collecting and and doing our grant writing for this COVID nineteen. So we've added an extra stipend for him, which is not uncommon uh during a time like this.
Absolutely not.
So then, the school water tank, so this was an unbudgeted item that came from the school department. It's our tank, it's our building, so it's not a cost that we can share with other communities, so they send a diver into the tank to inspect it. And it costs about seventy-five hundred dollars, this has to be done in July. Um so if we can fit it in, we should, and not go to town meeting with this, and I believe, given this analysis, that that we can fit it in. That's just another cost to carry.
What's the threshold again? I thought it was five thousand, is it nine, is it ten thousand?
For.
Sharing costs with the school, and and then, you know, we've had issues over the years at specific um amounts, and when it gets to some threshold. Then it it triggers something, I can't recall offhand, I'd have to go back into previous, um but do you know offhand?
I believe it's ten.
Me too.
Um but, you know, certainly look, but they they did ask, they don't have the money on the this budget side to pay for that, so. That's where. Yes, so the, um if you look at the two, if you add in. What we're under with what we're over, that gives us about thirty thousand, we're gonna have about fifty thousand in capital turnbacks, which is mostly the library roof. Which is thirty-five thousand of that, we should have somewhere between eighty and a hundred thousand in free cash. With whatever we've retained from the budget process, so we normally say we should retain a hundred thousand-ish. Um that would give us two hundred thousand, or or just enough to cover what we think will go into the budget, so free cash is. And these are conservative numbers, but not, not in the best place. So that's twenty, I'll stop there, if anybody wants to talk about twenty stuff.
No, I mean, thanks for laying it out like that, and I and I don't, you know, lean back on this as, you know, sort of a um. Make ourselves sort of feel better, but kinda, uh is is there some some municipalities in a lot worse shape than us?
Yes, there is, and um the finance committee and the board has been very committed to. The financial policies that we put in place, strong financial policies, so when you, when you follow your rules, and you save a little bit, and you have. Things in place, then then you can weather these storms, now, if we can weather the storm or not, it is to be decided, but there are some towns that do not. Have have anything to to fall back on, so it's a good thing, and and board should be commended for years of doing the right thing.
Okay, uh so twenty-one.
All right, let's talk about twenty-one, so. This is the summary document that you used to, and walk you through this, and then I have another cheat sheet for. For lack of better term, that can walk you through what we're thinking right now, so. Numbers weren't great for revenue. To begin with, as we talked about, um free cash usage, that's here in yellow, is is up to a hundred thousand, which is what exactly what it was last year. State aid, this number here, six twenty-nine, nine eighty-six. I X, about half town administrators believe that the state will keep the governor's local aid numbers, and do so by using the rainy day fund. Half believe that there'll be some type of cut here, and and that half is split, whether that's one percent, twenty percent. Um if if there was, say, a ten percent cut in our local aid number, that's a big deal, and probably only pluggable by uh use of. Of reserve stabilization or free cash, so it's really important that we monitor the state numbers. And we expect that to come at any time, and we really don't expect them to have a budget until the fall, so. It could be a situation where we decide to pass a budget with this number, not knowing whether or not they keep that number, which is, which is not great. Just is what it is, I'm just being as honest as possible, so in local receipts, so this is the money that we take in um locally, not tax money. So I wanna just walk you through that. So you remember this from our uh financial forecast, so we broke down, Kelly and I and the finance team, every type of revenue that we have. We looked six years back, which was um when we instituted soft rights, we believe it's the best data that we have. We threw out the high and low each year and created a five-year average, that's how we built our um local receipt projection, which. Came out to be about ninety percent of FY nineteen actual, so I know I threw a lot of municipal speak there, but it was a. Fairly conservative revenue estimate that we felt comfortable we'd hit, in order to make sure that we were. Meeting our financial goals. So, there's three I, three or four items I wanna talk about in here, the. I'm just gonna move your faces out of the way, hold on. So the motor vehicle excise tax, the problem with this is, we had a very conservative number, so two thousand nineteen, we had a. I don't wanna say good year, because this is taxing residents, but we had a high year compared to to recent years. We dropped that back because it was kind of an anomaly, and use the five-year average, which was, which was lower than nineteen, but understandably, it was conservative. And we know that people aren't gonna be buying new cars, um at least for the next few months, so we're back that number down again. To six hundred thousand, um which is about twenty-five thousand less than we had estimated, so we took. The six twenty-five was our, was our projection, and we backed that down to six hundred thousand. I vetted this with uh ten of my peers, we looked through all of these numbers together, and um we looked at each other's numbers, and each other's thinking. And it was certainly, there's some, you know, there's there's some art and science to this, but tho- that number appeared to be a consensus, that that was a smart thing to do. The rest of it, that you see in white, uh was pretty conservative, and and we believe that most of those things will continue to happen, so I know that sounds funny, but. People will um continue to pay certain fees for dog licenses, et cetera, burning permits. Planning board and comm-com fees, we're still getting board of health permits, so all all of these things, we feel comfortable with our estimates, and don't feel yet that we need to back them down.
Ryan, line ten looks a little conservative. Judging the way things are. Yeah, uh ten, yeah.
So that's penalties and interest on uh property taxes, that's our ability to collect. Um penalties and and interest of people who didn't pay their taxes, so.
That that may rise a little, if people are late.
Yeah, we hope, if they pay.
Okay.
It could go the other way too, so. Um we, like, we deferred payments of interest until uh June thirtieth at this point. We don't know what the legislation or the board's gonna wanna decide going into quarter one of of FY twenty-one, you may be looking to give more relief, that would drive that number down.
And and fiscal year nineteen, um you know, I know what the item twenty-seven building permits, the the solar stuff, but item um. Uh twenty-three miscellaneous fees, what was that?
Miscellaneous fees, so that is stuff that we don't normally charge that came in, I'd have to, I'd have to figure out what that was, but I threw that out, cuz that's, that's really high.
Yeah, okay.
Um I don't have that answer on on the top of my head.
Okay.
So, building permits, the big jump there, you see a hundred twenty-six thousand, a hundred of that was a um solar permit, so that's why. Why that's so high, we took all of that in um that building permit, because of the the change to regionalization. So we had projected this at uh fifty thousand dollars, we expected to build a lot last year, we have almost no new growth this year, but we have a lot of. We did have a lot of building projects in the pipeline, thought there'd be a little bit of building next year. Um now we're not so sure, so conservatively, we wanna cut that number in half. Um we're getting about half of what we expected to get in the spring right now, and we think that'll continue, at least for the first couple quarters. So that's why that number's in blue and back down. Um board of health permits, we were looking at that one, but we're comfortable with that projection now. Ambulance receipts is another biggie for us, that um you know, people are still using the healthcare system, the fire department's still fairly active, so we we think that'll come in the same. And then uh some big changes here, this miscellaneous revenue number dropped a lot, we used to share an assessing assistant with uh Rutland. That that didn't work out, so um we took that revenue out, so that was taken out of the expense side as well, which is why there's such a big drop. But the Economic Development Committee is committed to advertising their welcome to Hubbardson signs, and we think some revenue will come in from that. Which will help offset their expenses, um people still look like they wanna advertise, even in the current climate. And then investment income, we've dropped this down, we were very hopeful that this would come in higher, and we're just a little worried about interest rates. So that is what is driving. This number, this projected local receipts number, to drop about fifty thousand dollars, so we're backing and becoming more conservative with our revenue. And just for those folks that are watching, if we're, if we don't make the revenue we say we're going to, then you need to fill that gap by either pulling it from the operating budget. Or using one-time funds, so it's really important that. You know, you don't wanna be over-conservative and strangle the budget, but you you can't be, you can't be under, so you can't. Underestimate how conservative we need to be right now, not knowing how the economy's gonna go.
We are toeing the line and being under-conservative, I think, I mean, that, this is, I mean, I'm not um advocating um away from that. But uh I think we're, we're pretty cautious here.
And and this could be a a source for, you know, for for the next discussion, which is the budget deficit, so given that. With the current seven and a half percent assessment from Quabbe Regional School District. Seven and a half for our assessment, not for um their budget increase, their budget increase is three and a half, which equals a seven and a half increase for us. These are approximate numbers, our budget deficit is two hundred and sixty thousand dollars, so. Get a little cheat sheet for you, unless you wanna stop and talk about any of that. On. And and normally, we'd be a lo- a lot more solid with these numbers, but um it's just the, it's, I don't wanna blame. It's one thing, but it is the COVID nineteen that that's changing things a bit. A bit's a really understatement, a lot. Okay, so this cheat sheet. So you'll see on the top, it says uh controlling the, I'm looking for, see if I can make it bigger, can everyone see that?
If it can be bigger, I would appreciate it.
Okay, so up on the top, I'm gonna work from, from left to right and then down, so the two hundred and sixty thousand deficit is carried here. Okay, so, looking at, you know, discussion that we had Friday with the, with the schools, um it was relayed to us that. That it's likely that the budget will go down, but they have no idea how much it's gonna go down, so it's really, really up in the air. I know the school committee is meeting tomorrow, and we should know more about um what the school's thinking, their side of the budget. Whether or not they're gonna use uh some some costs that were saved this year to offset next year, or if they're looking at the expense side of the budget. And I don't wanna speak for the school side until we know more, but an exercise that we do is uh looking at the school assessment. If they were to say, drop down to what would equate for us, a seven and a, seven percent increase in our assessment. Then you'd see a thirty-eight thousand dollar reduction in our deficit, for a total deficit of two hundred and twenty-two thousand. And then we march down, so the three percent assessment was what I was saying the town could afford in my town administrator's budget. So if they did reduce their assessment uh down to what would equal three percent for us, which would be a massive cut from their current budget. Then, you know, that would be a thirty-two thousand dollar deficit for us, so. Obviously, this exercise shows that the school decision is the biggest driver of of what's going on, so on the left side.
Jump in real quick?
Sure.
And and momentum's probably not the right word or appropriate word right now, but there there was momentum. For getting all the towns together to um, you know, promote. Uh sort of joined voice on how much it was hurting across the board, so we've abandoned that discussion temporarily, because of all this stuff going on. But I'm absolutely gonna rekindle it, you know, as soon as it makes sense. absolutely going to rekindle it, you know, as soon as it makes sense.
And when I say we met Friday, we met with the three town administrators that are in the district. So Barry Hardwick and Hubbardson. We invited the other two towns, didn't get any, didn't get representation, but they were interested in the meeting. And then the school superintendent and the school operations manager were there, Cheryl and Sheila. And we had a very frank and open and, and good discussion about where the towns are at. So I pretty much presented this picture to them. Hardwick is in a very bad position and we're before the, before any of these discussions or, or COVID nineteen even happened. And Barry's looking at a very large, so Barry, Barry's being twice as conservative with their revenue numbers currently as we are. Projecting big cuts in state aid, et cetera. So they, they believe that their deficit is bigger than ours. So those, those were relayed and then the school relayed back how difficult it is for their budgeting right now. Again, I don't want to speak for, for the schools, but it's important I share the information we received on Friday. They're talking about what school would look like in a socially distanced manner, like I was talking about with the town. So that could, could look like, and I encourage people to talk to this, the school committee, the reps in the schools and not take it from me, but that could look like you know, not twenty kids in a classroom, but half of that. So you could picture a world where the school was two days virtual, two days in person. And trying to change and understand how the school budget would operate in that, in that world with buses that would be half full and still mandatory. The, the amount of decisions that they're trying to think about and uncover right now in their budget are, are pretty significant. So it's it's really hard to get a handle on, on what things are going to cost is, is what I wanted to relay. And they, they relayed that to us. We relayed kind of the, the budget deficits that we're facing. And, and here we go, as we set the stage for how do we budget in this world? So it shouldn't be all school though, on the town side. Okay, so we asked, we asked from, these are from the department requests. Police, fire, DPW and Town Hall, which is, is me going to all the departments and boards and committees. What would be a, a minor cut, a moderate cut and a major cut to, to services? And that equated to be about, you know, five thousand, ten thousand, fifteen thousand from each department. So these would essentially level funds everybody except for, for wages. So the sixty thousand we were going to invest in the community would, would be gone in a worst case scenario. And, and vice versa. So this would eliminate and put a lot of pressure on the police department to have a lot of one-man shifts. It would strongly endanger the, the call firefighter budget. And all but eliminate road materials and culvert materials again for, for any increased activity in the DPW. So then on the Town Hall side, we looked at cutting here and there, because there's not big budgets there, but from the legal, the warrant mailings, professional development, assistant hours, assessor supplies, treasurer supplies, IT budget elections. Elections is something that we have to hold, so you can cut there, but it's, it doesn't mean that you don't have to spend it. Building department training, dispatch, basically forcing that budget even further down, library hours and the increases that we, we recommended for the parks budget. So that would equal out to be as you see here, from low to high, eleven or seventeen or twenty-three. So if you cut twenty-three thousand of the Town Hall budgets, you'd basically be operating on a shoestring. So we'd have no ability to be flexible if anything happened. And then for liabilities, we had one of our interest projections go down. So that's just a freebie, a given five thousand that we can take out of the budget. We could pay less on the fire dump truck and push that problem down the road. You know, we could do that a little bit, a medium bit or a lot a bit. And then health insurance, that's just how much risk you're willing to take on the health insurance side. So on the low end, Town Hall could cut about forty thousand and have a, a small impact on services. Sixty thousand would be a medium and eighty-two thousand would be a, a pretty significant impact on municipal services. The only other thing floating out there is employee wages. So this is an average of about two percent COLA. There's only four of us that aren't on the wage plan. So that would equate to if you reopened all the union contracts and didn't pay any non-union raises, that's about thirty, thirty thousand dollars that you could save there. So not, not a lot for the damage it would do to the staff. So the if you look again now at the little, little cheat sheet calculator on the right, you can see in a world where, and I'm just making these numbers up. So this is just because I want everyone to understand if the school budget came down to four percent and you cut, which is more than our minimum local contributions, it's not very likely. And you cut massively into the town requests, you would be able to pass a budget for FY twenty-one with, with a lot of risk in terms of the expense side of the budget. And then anything higher than that, and to include that, in my opinion, you'd be needing to use one-time fund stabilization or reserve funds. Unless you wanted to cut even deeper. And then one thing to share is getting a lot of question about this. If you were to cut an employee in this environment, it would probably be just as expensive because of the unemployment costs. So it's not a lot of short-term savings in cutting the budget that way, although it would have to be considered in, in a worst-case scenario.
Well, I mean, I don't think I've changed from where I was over many months ago before we were, when we were first discussing all this and we just need to say we can only pay what we can pay and get together with the other towns who seem to pretty much feel the same way we do and make that stance. And if it starts going to one-twelfth budget and all that other stuff and you know, just start down that path because override wise, I can't even imagine how complicated it is to convince a, a town of an override anyway, but never mind with all the, you know, uncertainty of, of the COVID stuff. It just feels like a tough one to to start the process on.
So so some things to consider, the, the town meeting warrant needs to be, if we're going to have town meeting on June second, needs to be signed next week. Which is the point of having the, again, another meeting next week. So if town meeting is going to be pushed, it takes a little bit of pressure off that signing. And that decision can be made tonight or next week before we'd have to change things. I'm also recommending that we don't mail the warrant this year because the chances of the warrant being right is not high with all the change that's happening. So although it's been an agenda item of mine for yours for a while, I think this is the year to send a postcard to folks telling them to look at the town website and offering to mail warrants to anybody who, who needs them physically. Because of the amount of change. And then there's a world where, so again, the world is split on this, but there are some towns that are saying that they're going to have their town meetings in May or June, no matter what, and they're going to get their budget done. And then they're going to fix them in the fall because everything's going to change. And there are towns that are saying, there's no way we're going to have a town meeting or a budget done by, by June. So why not, why not just push it as far as, as possible? So I had that conversation with the finance committee. I know I've, I've alluded to it with you. But those decisions are going to have to be made relatively soon. And that's more of a where do you feel comfortable making these decisions? Not, not quite yet making decisions yet.
My opinion is, we talked about this last week and we said we'd talk about it this week. I don't think there's any question we should bump it. You know, whatever, a couple of weeks. I don't feel like we're close to being ready to have that. And if we have to make a decision next week, like last minute to actually have this thing on June second to send notifications out, it feels to me like we should be bumping this a couple of weeks anyway. What do you guys think?
I, I agree with you, Dan. Let's push it off. I don't know, what's the farthest we can push it, Ryan?
So not to get too municipal nerdy, but we'd be recommending to the moderator that this happened because the moderator controls it. You can push it a month right now into, into July. So I would say this first move should be within June. The election is currently scheduled for June thirtieth. So the twenty-ninth would be the latest you could have. I don't think you should do them on the same night. So the twenty-ninth, Monday, the twenty-ninth or you know, any day of the week of the twenty-second to include thinking about Saturday, the twenty-seventh of June, if you're going to do a not trying to make people laugh, but the cow flop version of town meeting where you line out the field and have it outside. So you know, a, a weekend isn't out of the question.
How about Tuesday, June twenty-third? What do you guys think? People are used to Tuesday evening, you know, the, the amount of people who come to these things and not, you know, anyway. It seems like a pretty far in advance. It's not the same night as the election, which is the last day of June, June thirtieth. What do you guys think about Tuesday, June twenty-third?
Yeah, that's fine.
What's the format? What's the format?
We don't know yet. We don't know yet. We're just, that's why we're trying to create some more time so we can formulate what that's going to be.
Tell you right now, it would be outside. If you had to say, make a decision right now, we'd be planning to go outside and have as much distance as possible. That could definitely change, you know, if the governor starts the phased opening on May eighteenth, maybe we progress that way. There's not a lot of people who believe that the traditional town meeting is, is going to be possible in June.
Well, if it's a Tuesday night as opposed to on a weekend type thing, we're going to be rushing against daylight disappearing quickly.
Well, I don't think so. I mean, it's going to be light for, until eight o'clock. We can start town meeting at six. And it's going to be a light agenda anyway, because like we talked about before and what most towns are doing, pushing all the real important stuff till special town meeting, which will happen in September, October or whatever. So I, I don't really think so.
No, let's shoot for that then.
Yep. June twenty-second.
One, one other point or question. Should we have a plan B if all of a sudden that Tuesday arrives and it's raining?
It's, it's a good question. My recommendation to you would be that you do have a rain date scheduled, but it's mechanically, that's the moderator opening town meeting and continuing it to that day. So it wouldn't be bad to communicate that in advance if it's going to be outdoors.
Okay, so it would be June twenty-second, Tuesday, June twenty-second with, you know, I don't know. Say that again, Pat?
The Tuesday would be the twenty-third, isn't it?
Twenty-third.
Sorry, Tuesday, the twenty-third. And then, you know, rain date. I don't know, what, Wednesday, the twenty-fourth?
And so on. So this doesn't need a vote from the board because it's the moderator's call, but I can communicate that to, to Renee and he's stated in the past that he, he's in a world of being flexible right now. So.
All right. Well, it doesn't need a vote, but, but this is important. So let's keep the discussion going just for another minute here. Does anyone, you know, have any, you know, other opinion on this or, or want to talk about it further?
I guess we can just see all the things progress in the meantime, right?
Right. Okay, so Ryan, you'll contact them.
Renee, yep. Okay, the, the last thing to review with you is, and for the public, I'm not seeing any, Dan, I'm not seeing anyone chat or raise their hand, of course, if they want to. That's what we're here to discuss. So just calling up the draft of the town meeting warrant. And I'll run through that really quick because we did that last time. First time some of the public is seeing it. So overall, the town meeting warrant looks a lot smaller than it normally does. Most boards and committees have pulled what they believe are their important decisions until a fall town meeting and are, are asking the board to support a fall town meeting. So the first three articles, or four articles are housekeeping articles that allow the town meeting to pick its officers, to hear reports, to allow the Board of Selectment to enter contracts with Mass Department of Transportation and to allow for the use of grants and aid for the schools, all the school districts. Article five is the annual Holden Hospital account. So we still receive money from this trust. This year we'll be using some of the money to fund the fire chiefs, fire chiefs of emergency response vehicle. So this is important to accept this money and be allowed to expend it for fire, mostly firefight training, fire response vehicles and board of health matters. Article six sets the spending limit for the town's revolving funds and identifies who's still in control of those revolving funds. This is now a town bylaw, so really all you're doing every year is setting the, the spending limits. This is how much is, and these are important because if, if they get to say the hazardous building demo fund gets to nineteen thousand nine hundred ninety-nine, they're not allowed to spend anymore until town meeting says so. Article seven is the budget article. This year we will be talking about that, I think, down to the wire. Article eight is for the money, Wanton Tuesday Regional Vocational Technical School or Money Tech Assessment. The Quabbin Regional School District Budget Assessment is Article nine. And Article ten is Quabbin Regional School District Debt, which we are obligated to pay each year. So those are being split out for transparency purposes in order to allow voting to be more transparent based off of the board receiving feedback during the last budget. Article eleven is money that's appropriated by the Cable Committee to run cable operations in town to include this video right now being put on the website and staffed by the, by the Cable Committee contractors. Article twelve is the board's commitment to the to the planning board to fund half of the master plan implementation, implementation chapter. If we are not successful in getting a grant to finish that master plan in this year. And then Article thirteen is the board's article for seventy-five thousand in free cash to finish the main street section of the town center project. And this is important because it keeps us on the timeline for having this project ready to go in two thousand twenty-two. Article fourteen is, the board identified this is, is something to talk about. The Finance Committee has also discussed the Finance Committee discussed the capital article found in Article fourteen. These are all the items recommended by myself in the Capital Improvement Planning Committee for capital purchase. That maybe we can push all but the necessary items to a fall town meeting in order to allow maximum free cash flexibility to cover FY twenty and potentially FY twenty-one budget deficits.
Yep.
So we can talk about any of these more. I'm just kind of going through them all. Article fifteen estimates revenues for CPA. Standard housekeeping article. Article sixteen comes from the Community Preservation Committee. It's their recommendation to appropriate two hundred thousand, fifty thousand from their general reserve and borrowing a hundred and fifty thousand to fund the replacement of the rainbows and playground. So this would require a two-thirds vote because of the borrowing and is supported by the Parks Committee as well. And then Article seventeen is the Center School Roof Project. So this is another discussion for the board and the Finance Committee. So this would require an override. This article language comes directly from the MSBA and has already been vetted by Town Council to borrow two point nine million dollars and, and some change in order to repair a very necessary repair for the Center School Roof. So for those hearing about this project for the first time, the MSBA considers repair projects under their accelerated program. Normally, when you apply for this, it's a multi-year application because you apply when your roof is bad and they tell you to, to deal with it for a couple of years. The first year that we applied for this, we got it, which means the MSBA, when comparing this to all projects across the state, about the Center School Roof was bad enough to fund it now. So funding it means they cover sixty percent of the costs. So with contingency, the number for the town would be approximately one point three million dollars we'd need to borrow. And that would be a debt exclusion, meaning additional property tax money if, if voters are willing to support it in order to pay for the, the life of that loan. And then Article eighteen and nineteen is the board's board's article to change their name from Board of Selectment to Select Board, joining now a majority of towns in Massachusetts. Doing that name change to be more, more inclusive and more accepting to all volunteers. That, that is it. That is a short town meeting.
Okay, I mean, we've been through it before, meaning the, the rundown of, of the warrant articles. Anyone have any questions? Okay.
So there are members of the Finance Committee, if anyone wants to discuss the, the, their feelings towards the capital items or feelings towards the capital items, or if you want to wait to hear recommendations from the finance committee. That's kind of a, a big discussion point in terms of where we're going. So I guess we'll wait till the, the finance committee meets on Wednesday and we'll, we'll offer some recommendations on a lot of this.
They don't have, I, I'm sorry. I, I thought you said we were waiting for them to comment like.
Oh, no, no. I'm saying, um, they're listening. So, it might be helpful to hear where the board's at in terms of capital.
Oh, um, yeah, I thought I, I chimed in before, just briefly. I mean, th- these guys look at the numbers more than we do as well. And, uh, if it's something we can push off, like many other people are doing, it makes perfect sense for me to do that. I mean, to me, to do that, right? I mean, I think you said the word unless they're essential. I didn't know which ones you meant out of those, but, um, I guess besides whatever is defined as essential by you and/or the finance committee, would make sense. But other than that, it feels like we should, we should, do what many people are doing, be conservative.
So this is what I said to the finance committee last week. The, all of it is necessary. The reason why we're so backlogged on capital is because things like this come up and you, you have to push these decisions. And we're not alone, not the only town that does that. So I, I do believe that they're all important and necessary. But if you were to pare it down to what needs to be done in June, the assessment of the library foundation, which there's a lot of repair money in there as well. So that could come way down and just assess where we're at with the library foundation. I think that's important because it, it might be worse than we think. The, the, um, computer replacement, I'm probably going to shrink that number as well. But those computers are approaching their end of life and they need to be replaced immediately. Just to make sure that we're compatible. And then, um, the, the, the DPW truck, is that truck that it would be replacing is currently out of commission and not in great shape. So it would potentially limit our ability to have a full fleet for the winter. I know it sounds like an easy decision, but if we don't have this meeting until October, we, we could be up against the deadline in there. So, those are, those would be the recommendations coming from me. Everything else is important, but could wait, to see where the world's at in the fall.
Okay. No, thanks for that.
And that is, um, you know, all the information that we want to share with the public. So that is the FY 20 budget situation where we're currently thinking the budget is for FY 21. And the town meeting warrant, which is now, um, got a couple more weeks for deliberation. So, it looks like the board will need to sign, this warrant by, if town meeting is going to happen on the 23rd, it would need to be signed by the 26th of May.
So that's the date that, is that, I'm sorry to interrupt. Is, is that the day after Memorial Day that we, we have a meeting?
Yes.
So perfect.
Yeah, it works. You might be happy to hear, we might not need a meeting next week. So.
All right. Well, thanks for the budget discussion. Um, here's what it is. And, and we have one more item on the agenda, which I don't see on our, in our packet, but it's the town administrator report.
Did it not get in there? It did not. That is a town administrator error, but I'll give you my report and put it on the screen. If you give me one second. Sorry, I just need to find it. Give me one minute.
Now, Ryan.
I'm sorry. Good night. I'm saying good night to you. Yep, just really fast.
I can start it for you with the budget update. So for fiscal year 2020.
I found it. I put it in the wrong file, which happens. Okay. Got it. Here we go. Thank you for your patience. So COVID-19, discussed that at length. And if anybody wants to, to find inform, more information, it's on the town website and the links are found in this report. For the department report, I talked about the, the police department, how they analyze their shift coverage and how they'll be phasing down their, their additional coverage over time to, uh, save money and respond to the way the world looks. Which is important. And then Mark, it's important to, to discuss how Mark is stepping up right now to help the Quabbin Regional School District deliver meals to students and residents in need. This is allowed under the relaxed reimbursement from Mark. So Sharon spearheaded that and did a good job making sure we're helping our vulnerable populations. And we're delivering more meals, I think, than people think. So a lot of people in need right now and a lot of our departments are stepping up to help them. And then if anybody's having difficulty reaching town staff, they can contact me directly by email or phone, to, and, um, it's happened a couple of times, just trying to track folks down. Not that people aren't being responsive, but maybe messages are being left on the wrong machine, or they can't find who they need to talk to. Come directly to me and I'll connect you with who you need to discuss it with. Okay. Financial management, we, we talked a lot about the budget deficit, so I can, bypass this, but the, the key is the governor's budget. Whether or not that changes and how that will really impact our budget. The school decision is coming. Really important part of this and, um, how, how conservative we want to be with, with, where we think the world is going to be. So this Wednesday, I had planned this spring to start, coffee hour, which is kind of ironic because I don't drink coffee, but coffee hour is what it's called to meet around town at various, uh, businesses, restaurants, et cetera, to, to meet with folks who didn't want to meet in town hall. So that got delayed. I was planning on starting that in, in April. So I'm going to try this virtual coffee hour. So I put out a Zoom link. I'll be advertising it. If folks want to log in and, and talk with me for a set time on Wednesdays, the first 30 minutes will be open forum. I'll have some topics if people just want to discuss what's going on in town. And if they certainly, if they have any questions or want to talk in a group, I'll be available. And then the last 30 minutes is set aside time that folks know they can make an appointment with me every week for one-on-one calls. So this will be running from 10:30 to 11:30 every Wednesday. However, if anybody wants to meet with me virtually on the phone or on Zoom, they can make an appointment with me anytime. I just wanted to have kind of set office hours for folks to, to log in.
Great idea.
And then, uh, employee recognition. So they're not formally staff, but I'd like to thank the Green family, Rick and Joyce. Of course, their volunteerism in, in town is legendary, but they assisted Katie with the Hubbardson flag and US flag display that's in our town center. So these went up a little early this year. We want to show our support for the community, the state and the federal government and all our frontline workers. So that looks good. Having the flags up in, in the town center right now definitely makes, made me feel good driving around town today. I'd just like to, in a month where we're not having the parade, just appreciate the extra support and patriotism from the Green family and others. Uh, so thanks again on behalf of the Hubbardson team.
Okay. Um, thanks. Uh, all right. Well, I, I think we're, we're wrapping things up here. Uh, I'll, I'll just head back to item 12, which was, matters not reasonably anticipated by the chair in case something's come up. And it hasn't for me, but has anything come up in the last half hour? So for anyone else, since we've been at this item last?
Yeah. I have a question. I'm just curious, since the last time we talked about the elections, have we gotten any more candidates or are we still have a lot of, uh, no, contests?
So I'm, I'm impressed with the number of people who have not only taken out papers, but gotten them back. Some very creative, work to, uh, to get the signatures. Definitely difficult during this time. The only three, and anybody can apply for, for any position, but the only ones that we have not received anybody, anybody pulling papers for. So that means nobody has shown any interest at all. Is one board of health position. It's a three-year position. One finance committee position. This is three-year position. And one park commissioner, which is one-year position. So all other open positions have, someone has pulled papers for or returned them or, or both. And the deadline is May 12th. So a little bit more than a week for folks to not only pull the papers, but return them. They're due the 12th as well.
Someone going to tell Katie that her kids can't sign hers? Um, okay. Uh, any other, any further matters? Anyone wants to bring up? No? Okay. Uh, public press, any questions or answers? I mean, questions out there from, from anyone, Ryan?
There's nothing in the chat and no hands raised. So if anybody wants to speak, do it now. I am not seeing anything.
Okay. Well, we are, we reached, we reached the end of the meeting here. Somebody want to make a motion?
Move it, John.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. New discussion? The vote, Dan? Yes, Jeff?
Yeah.
Jamie?
Yes.
Chris.